This is where you create
All this lyrics, shit, motherfuckin' poetry. I'm a coach in creating, generation part of our communities. You allow yourself to push us assholes out of our neighborhoods because you didn't wanna listen. You didn't want us to hustle our lives in our community, so you pushed our white ass out. That's why that motherfuckin' [inaudible 00:01:28]. We are way back since the era of the house shots. Because that motherfucker [inaudible 00:01:34]. Get behind here to invest in your [inaudible 00:01:38]. A nigga like [inaudible 00:01:41].
This is the Nipsey Hustle name and ceremony, city council.
You [inaudible 00:01:48]. I see you both [inaudible 00:01:51]. According to U.S.A.I.D.A., three [inaudible 00:01:59]. The fuck up all this.
Hey, dude. Man. Hey. L.A. is lit. I'm gonna stay home. L.A. is lit.
After Mr. Michael [inaudible 00:01:58]. Hi, Jared [inaudible 00:01:61]. Hi, Derek, you're here too. And my [inaudible 00:01:69]. You are the last [inaudible 00:01:72]. [inaudible 00:01:78].
I'ma go back in in a minute. My phone is about to die though. I'm looking to see if I could get an outlet so I could charge up this phone. But they are, they... They out here lit. Yeah, 3:40 back there, y'all. Nipsey Hustle's mother is here. This is the, uh, look. It says, "City Council Chambers. Join Councilmember Marquis Harris in honoring Nipsey Hustle." So he's getting a street in his name. They're allowing people to speak, so... I'm trying, I'm not trying, but I'm, I put a bit in to speak. You know what I'm talking about? I finna get up there to speak, but, uh, we hope they don't cut the line.
Good morning, hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm from downtown L.A. And for the rest of the [inaudible 00:01:56]. I'm really in favor of the intersection for Nipsey Hustle. Um, because hopefully those threats of the unfight with these councilmen did. Ten out of two voted for Mitchell versus the City of L.A. And it's destroying our city and extending Skid Row. There was two nice people voted against Mitchell versus the City of L.A. And just destroying [inaudible 00:01:11]. Against our city and Skid Row. Lots of the critics have a truce, but they're not gonna fight because there's so much business there. And they extended again on Skid Row. So please, please, vote for peace, vote for Nipsey Hustle for his intersection and declare a day for him. Thank you very much.
That's how you change politics.
Good afternoon, my name is Julie Smith, and I am a S.E.I.D. 2015 member or advisor. Um, this is about thing you know very well. I fought very hard to put you in office. And, um, I've gone to a lot of meetings and unfortunately, you know, I've heard a lot of [inaudible 00:01:49]. Constituents are disappointed. And I feel the [inaudible 00:01:52]. Because I fought hard, I locked down hundreds of doors. And a lot of times when I'm out there and I'm trying to get the, um, community engaged, and I'm trying to encourage [inaudible 00:01:55]. They say, "Why can't I listen to you? Who cares what you say? Who cares about that [inaudible 00:01:58]? You guys don't [inaudible 00:01:59]. And I asked [inaudible 00:01:61]. I said, "Well, who would you listen to?" And they told me, "Nipsey Hustle."
That's right.
I'm [inaudible 00:01:68]. Please, [inaudible 00:01:71]. I lose, I hope that one day I pass the cross so I can, you know, share the story. Because I have [inaudible 00:01:78]. So I'm telling you, um, I want you to continue to extend yourself to this community. And this is a message to all of you members. We didn't know [inaudible 00:01:81].
Good morning, everybody. My name is [inaudible 00:01:88]. I'm from [inaudible 00:01:91]. I run [inaudible 00:01:95]. Nipsey Hustle was a true leader. He was an agent of change. I'm forty and I looked up to him. I mean, it's real, like, we're brokenhearted. Like, we're, we're killing the ones that were supposed to protect the most. And Nipsey, he was a brother. He was my brother, he was everybody's brother. He was, like you say, a brother's keeper. He was one of those people that just looked out for everyone. And I'm definitely in favor of making that [inaudible 00:01:98]. But not only that, but we gotta celebrate him, you know? He was all about respect. And I'm from that leg, he's our roots. And I just wanna be nice to you guys for acknowledging him. And I just wanna tell everybody here, let's respect him, let's love him.
Thank you very much.
[inaudible 00:02:01]. Mr. [inaudible 00:02:08]. Go back to [inaudible 00:02:11]. We have a couple more speakers on item number one. I'm gonna have a [inaudible 00:02:14].
Yes.
You're sitting on item five, item five.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Chair. Now, this is a price we pay for [inaudible 00:02:40]. Item number one, number five. Um, hold on, please. There'll be here of drama. Um, item number one. We are saying that again, building and safety department are not doing enough to combat, uh, these nuisance abatement things. They're not enforcing the rule of law and they're not, um, they're not complying with these leads and these follow-ups. What they need to do is enforce and, um, follow up on all these violations. And they should conduct these, uh, by, um, inspections not on an annual basis, but on a weekly basis. We've got too much, uh, noise nuisance. We've got a lot of trash, we've got a lot of filth, we've got a lot of, uh, just street decay. It needs to be corrected. Look at Los Angeles, it stinks. Even a woman from Korea came out and said, "Los Angeles stinks, it's ugly, it's filthy." And we need, we need more building and safety department, uh, personnel to go out there and clean out the fucking city. We got too many fucking gang bitches and wetbacks destroying the city. And we've got too much [inaudible 00:03:00]. On top, there's nothing. [inaudible 00:03:04]. We need [inaudible 00:03:07]. We've got two [inaudible 00:03:10]. Menbets destroying homes and destroying cities and communities and people. We need to, we need the city to fucking enforce the rule of law. And that is [inaudible 00:03:19]. And [inaudible 00:03:22]. Menbets, menbets, and [inaudible 00:03:25]. And [inaudible 00:03:28].
I thought that was [inaudible 00:03:32].
Do not keep me within [inaudible 00:03:36].
Turn off that mic. Turn off her mic. The streets look like decay, but you look like...
See, these are the meetings that take place that our people are not at. This is where public policy. Saint Nick.
One monkey don't stop a show. Don't give me the energy or the attention.
Don't give it no attention.
Nah, but real talk. We supposed to be at all of these city council meetings. We supposed to fill out these seats because this is where shit gets done at.
And Madam President, it is permanent [inaudible 00:04:05]. Next, from X1A, C1D, E1F1G, F1H, that the leads may reduce to four dollars in subsequent return. And then from X1I, F1J, uh, that the matter to be received and filed inasmuch as ownership of the subject property has changed.
Ten ayes.
There's one, three, four, and [inaudible 00:04:52]. Mr. Anderson Geikes, are you here? Mr. Anderson Geikes.
His name is not Anderson Geikes.
Go through and [inaudible 00:05:01].
Ten ayes.
And Madam President, again, that's, uh, as amended by [inaudible 00:05:08].
This is going ahead and, um, [inaudible 00:05:12].
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you for letting us hear the testimony on item one. Uh, I am asking my colleagues here in Los Angeles District Council to take the unusual staff to make the findings that allow us to vote on this matter today. And, uh, today, take a vote that will send to the mayor to declare Slosson and Parchaw of Nipsey Hustle square. For this project, demonstrated urgency for needing to take a vote today. We have literally people in our city here and the family is here. We wanna close this matter and get it done.
You just made the findings towards this item. That's correct, Chair. There are two votes on the [inaudible 00:06:00]. One was members, one is voters, on the findings on special one. It's open the roll. Go through and [inaudible 00:06:10].
Ten ayes.
All money in, all money in. Let's try it again.
This is sister [inaudible 00:06:22]. This is sister.
I'd have, uh, Brett Robinson, who comes from Senator Kamala Harris's office, is here. Welcome, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you. Wait, hold up. My name is Brett Robinson. I'm the Los Angeles District Director for United States Senator Kamala Harris. And I'm here on her behalf to read a condolences letter to the families. To the family of Hermias Joseph Esten. Please accept my dearest condolences for loss of your son, your brother, your father, your partner. The hearts of so many in our state are broken by this terrible tragedy that involves... Hermias was an inspiration for so many in California and throughout our country. His commitment to empowering communities across South Los Angeles embodies a spirit of activism, leadership, and service that will forever inspire future generations in their pursuit for justice. I know words offered little comfort in the wake of such tragedy, but I hope that the fond memories you share with Hermias help you find comfort during this difficult period. Sincerely yours, Kamala D. Harris, United States Senator.
What episode was that?
Ladies and gentlemen, the lead that you're hearing today are actions of extortion.
This nigga.
Well, none of us here in opposition to rename Nipsey Square. None of us, we're all in favor. I too am here in this support. And to thank the artists, the music, the language. I appreciate talent, expertise in community advocacy. Because I too am an advocate. But today, we're speaking gracefully and honoring a man who should be respected. Mr. Hustle's done a lot in his community. More than I ever expected in my part to do in Boyle Heights. Mr. Leazar. But the good effort that [inaudible 00:07:08].
Mr. [inaudible 00:07:12].
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon again, [inaudible 00:07:21]. Yes, again, I did not know the man. And I appreciate all the accolades he's getting. Uh, so again, my question is, on a history, uh, Ms. Harris didn't mention anything about him when she was inducted. As a matter of fact, I don't even think he was ever swearing in party. The mayor didn't have a, a his swearing. He didn't play any of the music. I am being as respectful as I can be. I'm just pointing out that all his accomplishments... All his accomplishments would have preceded him. All of his timeframe, you would have heard more of him in the city council. And yet, the only people here are street rapping activists. And I have no problem. The problem is, what does he, what does he [inaudible 00:08:06]?
Go home and eat some creamed corn. Sit your ass down and watch TV. Wash your ass.
Bye, Becky. Bye, Becky. Bye, Becky. Bye, Becky.
Neighborhood.
First of all, to families... Recognizing death and the life, death and the life of a real community hero. Nipsey Hustle was dead. Uh, and his support is not just from millennials and fans of hip-hop, but also the senior citizens. Some who admire, uh, his... This is William [inaudible 00:08:23]. To support community development, support economic development. To supporting, uh, buildings and human capital, maybe venues, capital. You know, unfortunately, the fighting war, the [inaudible 00:08:39]. Had a vigil, a vigil and, uh, Vermont. Neighbors, third and police, uh, lamenting gun violence. Experiencing this out there. Last several weeks, uh, been over thirteen, fourteen [inaudible 00:08:55]. Totally unacceptable. And while we know that, uh, the death of Nipsey was not gang related before, this death is unacceptable. Gun violence is a real scourge that we all have to address and face. So I just want to, uh, just wanted to say that, uh, we all have a responsibility to work together for it. The [inaudible 00:09:05] that we had today, the all forms of support that occurred yesterday. I can't go with, hopefully we're remaining and reflect on it as [inaudible 00:09:18]. So as I said, Madam President, I'm honored to do this talk during this motion. We do know that, uh, this was a legacy of one community, one hope, and one pride. No matter what area you grew up in. And so, uh, [inaudible 00:09:31]. Members for us. And [inaudible 00:09:38]. There's a [inaudible 00:09:41]. Yesterday, at service, Marathon continues.
Madam Chair, thank you, uh, members, uh, being a part, uh, part corporation, part activist and, um, um, part continuing the marathon in real life and in real time. I'll ask you all for an enthusiastic high vote on, and a [inaudible 00:10:01]. He may be [inaudible 00:10:04]. Nipsey Hustle Square. I'm proud to present this motion along with Councilmember [inaudible 00:10:11]. Councilmember [inaudible 00:10:15]. Uh, we have, um, several seconds of voting. I'll ask, uh, all of the supporters of Nipsey Hustle to remain with us for a few minutes. Uh, we'll take a vote. Uh, I expect the vote to be successful. And then I'll ask, uh, Madam Chairwoman, if we can adjourn this meeting in the memory of, uh, Nipsey Hustle and enter his work into the permanent record of the City of Los Angeles. So that after this vote, uh, we can complete our business here today and honor Nipsey Hustle the way that he deserves.
Thank you very much. [inaudible 00:11:01]. Go through and roll. Happy to vote.
Eleven ayes.
And Madam President, transcribe that motion as opposed to [inaudible 00:11:21].
Close there, Chair.
Yes, it's clear.
Okay, members, are there any announcements? And then please all rise for your motion.
Thank you so much, uh, Madam Chair. It is with, uh, extremely heavy heart that I ask that we adjourn this today in memory of one Hermias Askadum, also known as Nipsey Hustle. We recount, uh, the particulars of his career for the record. Uh, Nipsey was a Grammy nominated music icon, popular hip-hop artist. He was a West Coast hero who spent his resources and his life giving back to the community. I'm gonna give a second for the family of Hermias to join me at podium. We lost Hermias on March 31st, 2019. The tender age of thirty-three years. In the front of his clothing store that within the last sixty days, he had acquired a department in which it sat. He was born on August 15th, 1985 and raised in the High Park neighborhood of South Los Angeles. His father, Davi, was the only family member to migrate to the United States from [inaudible 00:12:07]. And had here in the United States, Angelique. And together, uh, they had two sons, Samuel, Laxan, and Hermias Nipsey Hustle. Uh, Nipsey had two schools in the Los Angeles Unified School District. I will note that the president of the school board was here, uh, but had to leave. He attended Parkin Elementary School, John Rose Middle School, and Hamilton High School. His, uh, music career began when he started selling mixtapes in the parking lots and street corners throughout Los Angeles. About fifteen years before we figured out that we should make street vending legal, uh, Nipsey Hustle realized it was the way to do business, uh, in the City of Los Angeles. In 2005, Hustle put out his first mixtape entitled Slosson Boys. Uh, community members recall fondly him being there, selling tapes, selling CDs out of the trunk of a car, uh, along with his brother selling t-shirts and socks uh, out of parking lots. In 2010, his acclaimed Bullets Ain't Got No Name, Volume Two, received extremely coveted notoriety of landing on the cover of Freshman XXL Magazine, a major milestone for any hip-hop artist. To this day, it is one of their best and most sought-after covers. In 2013, realizing, um, as the world, rest of the world watched, the music business dramatically changed when there was Napster and you could start streaming music. Uh, Nipsey realized as a superior business person, uh, that music was free and that really what you were selling was an experience. And so, in his next mixtape, what he said is, "There are only going to be 1,000 copies. But each copy is gonna cost a hundred dollars." And everybody thought that was a laughable idea because every other album cost about twelve or thirteen dollars, whether you bought it online or you went to the store to buy it. Well, within hours, uh, Nipsey Hustle sold all 1,000, uh, CDs. He sold all 1,000 CDs for a hundred dollars, uh, within hours, and changed the way people look at how you market, uh, music here in the United States and around the world. Um, that action and that, uh, marketing and that guerrilla style and approach to the music business landed him in Forbes Magazine, in Money Magazine, and the Wall Street Journal as a pioneer for how business should be done. In, uh, February of last year, when the NBA All-Star Week was here, he released the Victory Lap album, his first, uh, studio album. And I'll just say, this is my editorial comment, the, it... This was the first album that he did with a big record company. But it wasn't as if the big record companies hadn't wanted to work with him before. Remember him telling me they, they were giving these contracts, assuming that I wasn't going to read them. He said, he said, you know, "Can you believe one of these contracts? They want, the record company wanted to own my name, that I made up and that I built up. I would have to give it to the record company in order to make a deal." And that wasn't a deal he was going to accept. And so, as he built his career and as he built his customer base, he was able to make a deal that was, uh, again, groundbreaking in the way artists related to record companies and record companies related to artists. Uh, also, as he continued to build, again, the experience, created the Marathon Company. Marathon, Marathon Company. All of the members of the city council that were here in 2015 for Christmas, uh, you got a Crenshaw shirt from Marathon Stores as a Christmas gift from the council member of the eighth district. Uh, but what Marathon represents is much more than tough selling t-shirts and pushing, uh, the brand Crenshaw. What it represents is the notion that as our community creates culture and the world consumes culture...
Facts.
Our community ought to benefit from that culture.
That's right.
That's right.
Well, what helped and lost it with African-American culture is it gets created in the African-American community.
Come on.
Everybody in the world benefits.
Say that.
Except for the neighborhoods that it's created. So Nipsey said, I'm gonna make people come here. No matter what the news says about how dangerous it is and how hard it is to hear, I'm gonna force people to come to our community and I'm forcing them to spend money here. Because he understood, without one economic school, that when we leave our community and we go to Culver City to buy things and we go to Fairfax and all of those, uh, no disrespect to Mr. Caress, but when we go there, that helps the tax base of another community. Right? But if people have to come here and spend, it helps us get better sidewalks and it helps us get better services and it helps to make us build, help us build a kind of community, uh, that we, we all deserve. I, uh, that album, the Victory Lap album, was nominated, uh, for Best Rap Album, which is an amazing feat for your first time as a major studio record. Um, and even though it did not prevail, uh, as the Grammy Award winner, it was by far the most critically acclaimed album of, of that year. I met Nipsey Hustle, uh, several years back at about eight o'clock in the morning at Crenshaw High School. There's gonna be a rally, ironically enough, uh, pushing back and opposing gun violence. And I remember folks saying, uh, you know, Nipsey Hustle's gonna be at this rally. And I said, well, you know, he has a show the night before. He's not gonna be at a rally at eight o'clock in the morning. And so, I got there, I didn't have a show the night before, I had a good night's sleep. I got there and Nipsey was already there with his daughter.
That's right.
Waiting for the rally to start. And a trunk full of CDs and t-shirts ready for the sale. He had made a special t-shirt for, for the action. And I met him there and he started to tell the story of what he wanted to build and how he wanted to build and how he wanted to connect. And at that very moment, he knew that you were dealing with someone that you were only gonna see once in a lifetime. Someone that understood and was, uh, a superior cultural leader, that knew how to speak to people that most people can't get through to. And at the same time, he understood the big complex, uh, concepts and trends that we deal with in our world today. So, so we have this problem in the community that, uh, we get low-quality products sometimes, right? So if you go to the supermarket, you don't like it, when you get somewhere else. And so, you know, economists write papers on that and they publish articles about that and they write books about that. What Nipsey did is, he made up a movement called Proud to Pay.
That's right.
Right? And he said, if we're, if you're gonna buy something in our community, you ought to pay full price for it. Because when you pay full price in your own community, that's how you build your community. Don't discount just because you're dealing with your brother or your sister. He also created the, the movement and the companies call All Money In, No Money Out, right? We, if we create something, we need to bring people to our community, uh, to, to consume it. And so, as he did that, as he began to understand gentrification and how it works, he was very clear. The only way you can stop this is if we buy this property.
That's right.
And we hold it for us. And so, he started trying to buy properties, one by one, by one by one. And, uh, we were very, very excited, uh, at the end of last year, when in that very parking lot that the owner used to try to kick him out of when he was selling tapes and t-shirts, uh, that the other merchants, uh, didn't like, uh, they made here. And, and a merchant that I remember him talking to me about that morning, um, he said, you know, there's this hamburger, hamburger vendor, hamburger store in our neighborhood. And they took the chairs and tables out of the hamburger store. And he said, I went and I asked the owner, why'd you take the tables and chairs out of the store? And he said, the owner told me, he said, because I don't want people hanging out in my shop. I want people to have to get their burger and leave. And I remember him saying, can you believe somebody would say that about us or do that to us? Well, uh, before he passed away, Nipsey Hustle was that burger vendor's landlord.
That's right.
And so, uh, we go on and on, uh, with stories about back in ninety and what an amazing record that is that we invite all of you to, to, to come to at one time or another, the coworking space, the pioneering coworking space in, in South Los Angeles and in the Hyde Park neighborhood. The host of businesses from a hair business to a, a barbershop to a fish place, just whatever our community needs and whatever we wanted and want to prepare to consume. Uh, Nipsey either started the business or he helped someone get started and realize, uh, their vision. Uh, the Marathon Stores, the first smart store. When you go to the Marathon Store, you can pull out your phone and you point it at a sign inside the store and you hear a song from Nipsey Hustle that you can only hear there. So you gotta come to Slosson and Crenshaw in order to hear this record or to see this video. Uh, and some of the, the engineers who helped, uh, create those brands and create those, uh, products are, are with us today. And then yesterday, as we opened up a memorial service in the Staples Center, which was packed to the gills, uh, we began the memorial with a letter for President Barack Obama. And we heard a number of tributes and a number of testimonies from, uh, his family, including his mother and father, and, uh, David is here with us today. Mr. Asgadam was there, uh, today, we see in the store all the time, watching over to make sure everything's going okay. Uh, was there with us, uh, and shared. And then we did a procession on through the streets of the city, some twenty-five miles. And you could see, uh, the news media was up in cameras for the most part, up in helicopters for the most part. So they were showing people from, you know, long, long distances. But if you were in a car like we were, you could see, a lot of the people were just bawling, crying. People as elderly people, young people, children, uh, young adults. Uh, some people raised defiant fists and some people just said, we love you, uh, to the family members and, and supporters, uh, that walked by. And so, I'm happy today to be able, on behalf of a, a very extremely grateful city, to thank you all for the gift of Hermias. And Black Sam, the brother of Hermias and Samantha, the sister of Hermias, who were within and by his side, uh, at every step of the way, at every venture, at every venture, um, that he pursued. One of the things I noticed about him and always respected about him is, he always, always brought his family with him.
That's right.
Any deal that he was gonna do, his brother was there, his sister was there, his daughter was there a lot of times. Dad would be there many, many times, uh, as well. And so, on behalf of an extremely grateful city who can never, ever pay back to you what you all gave to us, I want to, again, thank you and we extend to you a very small honor in renaming Slosson and Crenshaw, Nipsey Hustle Square. And today, we adjourn our business in the memory of your son, Hermias Asgadam.
There you go, and I just wanted to say thank you, that was beautiful. And to the family on behalf of the Los Angeles City Chemicals Police, our sincerest condolences for your loss. And I want to thank the public and the president and some of those comments who were earlier, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.